We have a thumbs up. Okay, I've got the gavel. We are good to go. I will bring this meeting to order and first thing to do is review the agenda. Any changes for tonight?
No, there are not.
Wonderful. So it should be one major subject or one subject. And so first, let's do attendance and to officially welcome Stephen Ball as a real voting member tonight. But attendance, Stephen Ball. Phoebe Binzinger, Jan Chastain. David Fisher is absent tonight. Chad Huffman is here. Delphine Chateau. And Richard Rogers. Okay, so just David Fisher is missing. So shall we, we need to review last week's or the last meeting minutes? Any comments or changes from the group? That is quick and easy. Is there a second? Sounds great. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? We're unanimous. Okay, so Will, we'll turn things over to you. I assume.
I'm actually going to let Ann speak for a bit.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Hi, so I am here to talk about our comprehensive plan and specifically the implementation plan. I had the pleasure of talking with Steve Ball one afternoon and he asked me, "Have the planning commissioners discussed or looked at the implementation plan for the comp plan?" And the answer is no, you guys haven't. And so it's a really good idea to do it. And what happened is after we adopted the comprehensive plan, you all were in the thick of reviewing applications and so we never went over this part of it. So I thought since we don't have any items on the agenda, it'd be a good time at least to go over it quickly. You may have questions and we can answer those today or talk about them in the future. But as you know, we use the comprehensive plan to guide decisions at the city that include decisions you make when you review applications, where we put roads, how we prioritize improvements and what types of investments we make in our community. And so the comprehensive plan is based on values that our community identified through that big public outreach process. And as a reminder, they include stewardship of natural resources, excuse me, prosperity and opportunity, health and safety. Other values include fiscally response, being fiscally responsible, family-centered, future-oriented, diversity and inclusivity. And all of this is in that big comprehensive plan document. You all have access to it. It's on the website. But I took excerpts from the document to present here. The guiding principles are then included in the comprehensive plan. And these are things that emerged as big themes in the comprehensive plan that we base our decisions on. And here they're spelled out. One is land use and growth. "We're meant to be encouraging, facilitating and managing growth in a fiscally responsible manner that retains Montrose's small-town character in a rural setting." Transportation is the second guiding principle, transportation and mobility, "to encourage and facilitate a safe, efficient and convenient multimodal transportation system." The third is housing and neighborhoods. And this is where you'll see your tasks as a planning commission really start to come out. But in principle number three for housing and neighborhoods in Montrose, we think of that as encouraging access to a broad range of housing opportunities through the facilitation of programs and partnerships. Guiding principle four, parks, trails and open space, "encouraging and facilitating a variety of public parks, trails and recreation opportunities in strategic locations." Guiding principle five, health and environment, "encouraging and facilitating healthy living, access to quality and affordable healthcare, enhanced public safety and the preservation, protection and access to natural, historical and cultural resources." Six is economy and opportunity, "facilitate and incentivize business growth and development, community services, quality jobs, educational opportunities and tourism assets to encourage businesses and people to stay, play and live here." Finally, number seven is downtown. "Encourage and facilitate a vibrant downtown maximizing opportunities for businesses, improving safety and enhancing the quality of life while also maintaining its character and historic viability." And then in the rest of the comp plan, which we're not going to go through today, each guiding principle has goals and objectives within each one about what we prioritize, what we're looking for, how we make decisions. And then finally, the implementation plan is the section where we were able to, with Amy Sharp's help, identify really some tasks and things that we can do over the short term, medium term, long term, and sometimes just generally ongoing in order to try and implement the goals, objectives, principles in this comprehensive plan. And so again, goals, objectives and implementation plan is how our comp plan is laid out. They're all interrelated. If the objectives are followed consistently and the actions implemented over time, the goals and vision of our comprehensive plan will be achieved. And then each subsection of the plan includes goals and objectives derived from applying the vision and guiding principles to each subject area. So we have an entire chapter called an implementation plan. It's towards the end and it's what I sent you. So I took out the rest of the comp plan. I emailed you today, just that implementation plan so that you could look at it. And I altered it with stars and some blue text in order for you to see the items that really are planning commission items and a few updates about where we're at. So if you have the PDF, you'll see the same information, the PDF I sent today, you'll see the same information that I'm showing right now. But tonight, I'm only going to highlight the items where planning commission is noted, not going to go through every single one. Though you all are very engaged and so you're probably interested in the rest of them. So feel free, of course, to look at them at your own time. But first, in land use and growth, action 1.1, or really goal 1 is our land use map. "Adopt a land use and growth map in accordance with the following objectives." "Upon adoption of the comprehensive plan, the city's land use codes and ordinances should be updated to conform to the comprehensive plan and support a timely and reasonable development review process." And that all plays into our future land use map and really everything that we're doing. And we're doing that. So that's the process we're working on with Martin Landers. And so just as backup, this is why we're doing it. So we adopted our comp plan and now we're updating our land use codes and ordinances to try and conform to the comp plan. It's probably an ongoing process. We started it this year. We intend for the first part to be done this year. But I will tell you that we're going to keep talking about this in 2023 and 2024, always trying to think about whether we are using our ordinances on our regulations to implement our comp plan. Action 1.2 is to research land use zoning changes to incorporate mixed-use neighborhoods where feasible and appropriate and to enhance neighborhood character. And so just as a reminder, this is also a planning commission item. You may not be doing the researching part. That's probably more of a staff thing. But you're participating when we're making recommendations to you, for example, for rezonings or if we're talking about changing zone district standards in order to incorporate mixed-use neighborhoods where feasible, it's part of our comp plan. And so that's part of the reason that we're talking about it. Something that I have learned here in Montrose and through our comp plan is this phrase "mixed-use" is used a few different ways. So sometimes mixed-use can mean residential and commercial together in a neighborhood or in a building. And sometimes in Montrose, it means like mixed-use in terms of types of residential use. So you'll hear people talk about like a mixed-use neighborhood sometimes. And that can in Montrose mean single-family homes, duplexes, also apartment buildings. So just a note, and we try to specify what we're talking about when we say mixed-use, whether we're telling you there's residential and commercial or there's just a few different kinds of residential. The second goal in the land use section is that the comprehensive plan and land use plan are living documents that are kept current and will change over time. So 2.1, "The comprehensive plan should be referenced by staff on a regular basis when making decisions, updated every five years by staff, planning commission and city council to keep up with changing conditions and completely rewritten every 10 years with input from staff, planning commission, city council and the general public." So we did all of our outreach in 2020, which means we're going to be updating it in 2025 and maybe even sooner here and there with some updated maps and other items. So you're not out of the clear yet just because it feels like we just did it. So you also are regularly referencing this document when you're making decisions and we're trying to use it more and more too when we present items to you and to city council. The second action in this section is, "Upon adoption of the comp plan, the city's land use codes and ordinances should be updated to conform to the comprehensive plan and support a timely and reasonable development review process." So this one is really similar to the previous goal or action that we talked about with the addition of a timely and reasonable development review process. That is a goal of our development community, our staff and you. It's not necessarily a goal in every community. So it actually is special that it's included here, that we want to make it reasonable and timely for people. And we're working on that right now with that land use code consolidation. We hope that by making a unified code, it'll be easier for the public. It'll be easier for all of us too. Any questions as I'm kind of keeping rambling on here? All right.
Good time to ask a question.
Sure.
This makes it sound like the comprehensive plan comes first and the city code falls in behind it. It seems to me that in discussion, when we're trying to sort out zonings, it's made pretty clear to us that the city, the city codes are more override the comprehensive plan.
Yes, so the comprehensive plan is a guiding document. So big picture vision for what we want our community to be like. And then we use that big picture vision to create the actual regulations in the code that are enforceable. So the regulations in our code are kind of like the rules. And so when you're making decisions, you're using both, but you cannot approve something if it's contradictory to the rules, which is those regulations. And then you're using the comp plan as big picture to reinforce your decisions. So in decision-making, the comp plan does not override the land use code, but it does and it should support it. And what we're working on right now is to make sure they're compatible. You had some applications about a year ago where our outdated comp plan was kind of feeling incompatible with some of our regulations and vice versa. And so that's why we're making sure right now, ideally, if we want to see, for example, in our comprehensive plan, a wide variety of housing types, we need to make sure in our regulations that we allow a wide variety of housing types in our community. Otherwise, you're going to get stuck. Does that help, Jan?
No, it would help if they are compatible because I think we have been caught between the two. So yeah, I'm glad that you're working on it.
Yeah, go for it. And Steve, if you don't mind talking into the microphone, please. Thank you.
But is it right to summarize that in a more concrete way to say that the code might concretely rule things in or out, but sometimes the code might allow two things in, you know, and the comp plan then wouldn't rule things out. But if two things are allowed in by the code, the comp plan might help decide between multiple options that are allowed by the code.
Yeah, and I think that's right and a good example. And also, I'm trying to think of another good example. So you didn't have to rely on this, but you, when you were considering a conditional use permit for Blue Corn, you were using the code and you're using all the rules in the code, right? So you're going through how you can grant a conditional use permit and you're making sure that there are not negative effects on the neighbors and that if there are, you're putting in conditions to address them. And I don't know if we explicitly talked about it through our comp plan, but we could have also looked at our comprehensive plan and talked about the goals for creating a vibrant economy. There's information in our comprehensive plan about a diverse economy. There's information in our comprehensive plan about jobs. And so that's usually not something, you're not going to make a decision using the code on that, but you could say, "Look, in our comprehensive plan, this is exactly the kind of business we're trying to bring here. So let's try and figure out a way to make this work," right? So that's where the comprehensive plan is helpful for all of us for that really big picture view to make sure we don't get too lost as well in the regulations and we're considering the bigger impacts for our community. All right, but it is, it can feel confusing when we start to get in here and talk about implementing it to think that they might overrule each other. Okay. So instead of reviewing maybe all of them or one by one, I'm going to mention here that 2.3 and 2.4 regard updating the land use code. So the planning commission is listed as a partner on that and both of those are occurring with our 2022 code review. So I think you're going to get the gist here that in our 2022 code review process, we're addressing a lot of these initial items in your implementation plan. And we might find when we get to the end of our 2022 code review, we might still have more to do. So there might still be a phase two or a phase three to that. And we'll revisit our comprehensive plan to see where we're at on the implementation plan and see, you know, likely right now, we're not going to make a lot of changes to zoning because that's not the goal of this particular update. We're consolidating our regulations. We're making sure that they're consistent, big picture with our comp plan. But we might identify through this process, hey, like, do we want to combine R1 and R2? Or do we want multifamily in more zones? So we might go back in again in a future year in order to do a better job of making our zoning regulations consistent with our comp plan. Amy presented an annexation plan at the beginning of 2022. And the annexation plan is something we do annually. It's section 2.5. So you'll hear us talk about that every year. But it essentially identifies the area outside of our city limits where we think we might annex and why. So now switching to a new goal, which is landscape and character. So again, this one kind of came up. You don't have regulations really regarding landscape, but we know that it generally matters. And so action 4.1 is to revise the zoning, land use and development code to encourage new development along the river while preserving its natural character. So this is telling us, consider creating regulations in your zoning code to discuss how to encourage new development on the river and also preserve the natural character. So that's something along the way that we'll talk about. But to Jan's point, taking the big picture idea and making a regulation to reflect it. Number five is about infill and redevelopment. Develop a plan to revise and/or expand the redo district as well as undeveloped lands and update land use codes to reflect new regulations, including mixed-use development. So we looked at all the goals in the comp plan and decided that expanding or revising the redo district would help us accomplish goals for infill and redevelopment. And we did public input at the beginning of 2022. And we're also talking about this with our 2022 code review. There are certainly improvements we can make in the redo district. And so you'll be hearing about that as part of this process. Yes.
Just to do a redo explanation on the forum. What is the redo district and what purpose does it serve?
I would be happy to. We'd be happy to. We also took a tour with a couple of council members recently and looked at a few redo projects that are in the works and that have been completed. If that's something planning commission is interested in doing sometime, maybe right before a planning commission meeting or separate time, we'd love to do that with you too. There are some really great things happening in people's backyards and in the alleys. So we could go look at that. This one is something you're listed as an item on. It's really something the staff mostly does, but it's reviewing the intergovernmental agreement with the county and the urban growth boundary and updating as needed to align with the goals and objectives of our comp plan and ensure the availability of land for future growth. What's not stated here is, you know, that you coordinate with the county planning commission. Since I've been here, we've had one meeting with the county planning commission and the city planning commission. Some of you were there and it's getting close to time to do that again. And so stay tuned, but we'll likely do that. We updated the IGA at the end of '21. We didn't make any substantive changes. It stayed the same. And there's been, especially over the last 10 years, as I understand it, really good cooperation with the county and the city on this. The county is undertaking some new planning efforts regarding transportation. And so I've let them know that we're all happy to participate as much as they want in that process too.
So is it a conflict of interest to be on the planning commission here and on the counties? Or can we do that?
I don't know if anyone's ever done that. I think you could do it. I have to say, I don't know how the county selects theirs between city residents and unincorporated residents. You can try and be the first, Delphine. We don't have anything in our regulations that say you can't be on the county planning commission. Maybe check with the county. All right. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I'll leave it at that. Some people love meetings. I think that's great.
Ask just very quick questions. It sounds like, I think I know the answer, but just again, so understanding the role of the planning commission because it is, talk about implementation. And you're saying, well, a number of these, even though, say, we're listed on the implementation part, it sounds like the staff is reviewing, is doing all of these actions and then we'll just be implementing the outcome of that. There's not, is there in any of this going to be any input or check-in from us? I know that wouldn't be in the code, right? We don't have any legal, you know, authority about this process, but this isn't a legal process that you're going through. I guess you get my question. Are we just, you're saying, okay, we're doing the redo district and then is our role in the implementation just going to be implementing the new results from that? Or in that action item in the other ones, is there going to be any sort of conversation or check-in about that before the finalization process?
Yes, that's a great question. So even in the redo, the way our code is set up is really staff. And right now it's William. He reviews all the redo district applications and they're approved at an administrative level, at a staff level. But that's one where, you know, we had a public forum on it. So we had public outreach and I think some planning commissioners were there. And so you participate in that way. And then it's likely that you would participate somewhat informally, you know, with me and Will. We'd love your input on it. You know a lot about our community. And so you don't make a formal review and recommendation to city council on those amendments, but we like to seek your guidance on these big changes. And especially because we're going through this comprehensively with Martin Landers in a code update process, you're participating in that too. In a way, it's a good thing. For example, action 6.1, reviewing the IGA, that that doesn't come to you. Because if it came to you, it'd be because there's a problem. So if maybe the county and the city were not seeing eye to eye on how annexations should go or if the city, you know, wanted to annex more than the county was comfortable with or the county felt like we shouldn't be annexing at all, then those conversations would come to you because we'd have to talk about how to move forward. So in this case, I think status quo right now means that it's working for both parties. Yeah, so I guess both. I was talking with Matt Miles, actually. I'm so developer about annexation processes in other communities. And even though annexation is regulated by state statute, some communities want to do more and do it different. So he was telling me about some places where the county planning commission and the city planning commission have to like meet first on every annexation agreement and come to agreement about how it's going to move forward. You can imagine that that has some negative implications here and there. And it's mostly because there's not always agreement on those applications. So we don't have that kind of process here. And we negotiate through our IGA that essentially if someone comes to the city and they want to become part of the city, we let the county know if they're in our growth boundary. They don't have to say okay, but they always do because they're happy for us to take over, responding to police calls and taking care of roads. And it's been good so far. So as some background. And if you're bored, you can Google how that's going in your Ray County, just as an example of our neighbors where it's not going so well. Yeah, they are disagreeing right now. Transportation and mobility. We had a really good presentation by Scott Murphy about our transportation and mobility map. But one of the things you do is you're in this category of reviewing site development and subdivision regulations and revising the zoning code as needed to provide adequate off-site infrastructure, improvements and connections and trails within and between developments. So occurring with 2022 code review, but I can mention, you know, some, one thing that we're talking about and you will give input on through our code update process is when we're requiring open space as part of a subdivision, what should that open space be? What should it look like? What should it be used for? Should it be just an extension of someone's backyard but labeled as open space? Should it include a trail or a future trail? Do we want to require anything? Do we feel like we're being too onerous about requiring extra open space? And maybe now we care more about density where appropriate as opposed to big grassy open space areas. So this is where you will be giving some input.
So talking about open space, is it true that the trails that go through subdivisions are part of the city trails? And on the city trails map, tell me more about that because I don't understand that well.
Yeah, so it depends on the trail. So some of them in subdivisions have been specifically dedicated to the city and the city maintains them. There are some other older subdivisions like American Village where those trails were built privately, but they were always intended, and you can tell on the plat, to be public, used by the public. But the planning commission and council at the time had kind of a different philosophy than we do now. And they required developers to build the trails and then maintain the trails. And they would be for the public in order to create a long, beautiful trail network. At the city, at least right now, and most of the applications that you see, will have developers build a trail at some point. And then the city will usually maintain it because it's meant to serve the entire public. There's this kind of philosophy about like development pays its own way. And there are communities that try and make developers build and then maintain things in perpetuity. It's just a different philosophy than what we have, which is that here the city tries to make it more affordable for the residents and then the city takes on that burden of future maintenance. So they're all meant to be public, meaning used by our community. Who maintains them can vary. Did I cover that all right? Chris gets this question a lot.
Yes, this has recently come up quite often and Ann nailed it.
Something that used to happen for some perspective is, and this is getting at this, but site development subdivision standards. You know, it used to be if someone came in with a big subdivision and it was next to a road, we'd tell them they had to build a sidewalk, curb and gutter for the entire length of their subdivision that was adjacent to a public right-of-way. And there were times where that sidewalk went nowhere and it was the only curb and gutter on that road. It was not functional and it felt a bit like we were extracting something from the developers. So we try and, we try and do things in a different way now. And you hear Scott talk about that almost every application that you see. You know, what the city really requires, what's needed for feasibility, all of those things. And we're taking the opportunity right now to look at that again. You refer to the zoning regulations in the land use map to incorporate transportation planning with land use planning. Scott brings that up all the time. Hey, our land use map says there should be a road here. This is why we're asking the subdivider to build a road. Housing and neighborhoods. This is something we're working on now, but I think it's important to remember it's part of our comp plan to review our current policies, update them where needed and determine to review our current policies, update them where needed, in determining where and how an applicant proposes to apply mixed densities. The planning commission and city council should take into account compatibility with adjacent land uses. Um, you, you do that in all ways. Um, recently, you looked at an application for rezoning that um didn't allow for uh, you know, mixed densities next to the rec center, didn't allow for apartments. And you rezoned it because you looked at adjacent land uses to really see what would be compatible. There might be times when you look at compatibility with adjacent land uses and you decide rezoning or mixed densities is not compatible. But we're proposing that looking at compatibility with adjacent land uses is part of the process, um, not just how something might be zoned next door. Um, we're updating zoning and land use codes, regulations, policies and processes to promote and incentivize housing that's attainable to a variety of residents. Ensure a variety of housing types are defined and allowed in appropriate locations. So um, again, actually in our comp plan is a guiding vision to try and have a variety of housing types, allow them and have them be attainable to a variety of residents.
Have a question.
Mm hmm.
Well, I have a really early draft and I keep it because a really good friend of mine who has since passed, when he and I were talking about it, he spilled his glass of wine on it. So I've kept it.
Oh.
It's really, obviously really outdated because in that one, and I can't remember the date this actually came out, but it was one of the early ones. Under, the, the actual structure of the outline has changed quite a bit in terms of what things are called, right?
For, in our comprehensive plan? Yeah, probably from the first draft. And you're looking at the envisioned 2040? Okay.
So it says in here, it does have a subsection under goal. HN affordable housing. It's, I don't see in here. And it talks about a mix of housing price ranges, blah, blah, blah. Maybe this is all irrelevant, but anyway, one it does mention, which is only one of two places in the whole plan where homeless are mentioned, and this is one of them. Says uh participate in partnerships to address homelessness. And I'm kind of wondering what happened to that.
Mm hmm.
Where homelessness? For homelessness, per se? I looked through and I didn't see the actual term homelessness.
I can find it for you, but it is in there. I can't, I don't think the planning commission is listed as one of the potential partners, but a lot of other um organizations are. Um, and it, it, I'll look for it again. Mm hmm. And I think the reason the planning commission is not listed is because it's not specific to our land use code. So again, there's lots of things that the city as a whole and our community works on together that is not within planning commission's purview pertaining to applications or the land use code. Sometimes it happens that, uh, you know, a homeless um partnership might come to your attention at the planning commission if they're building.
The areas are irrelevant to us and that's fine. I got off track.
No, it's good. It's good. It's, it's, it all pertains. And thanks for bearing with me. Um, I'm trying not to be too repetitive, but I do think um there's some interesting things that come up. And it's good for you all to, to know what you're in charge of really here and what you'll be participating in. Um, you're listed on planning commission about monitoring housing trends and conditions in the community in order to identify gaps in housing types, tenure, density and affordability. Consider incentive programs accordingly to address needs. So, you know, city council's on there, too. They really oversee the incentive part of it. Um, but we all will be talking about, and in our own lives, monitoring housing trends in order to try and propose to one another. Do we need to change our regulations? Is something happening that is bad that we should stop? Is something happening that's good that we want to keep going or we, we want to see something different? Um, so sometimes that'll be formal, sometimes it'll be informal, but we lean on you as planning commissioners to help. Um, review and modify housing incentives to encourage more low and moderate income housing. You're here and this is likely, again, more of kind of an informal thing, or we might come and discuss some policy ideas with you that come from city council.
Where exactly do we input our, our? Where are we involved in that?
Um, so you wouldn't likely do the incentive part. Um, but there may be a way that we're changing our zoning code that acts as an incentive. For example, in the redo district, um, we waive the unit fees for the accessible, sorry, the um accessory dwelling unit. Is it the unit fee? Is that right? For water and sewer? The unit fee. And that's actually in our code. And so that is an incentive that got codified in our code for the redo district in order to try and encourage a type of development. So if we were changing the code in that way, um, especially during this 2022 process, we would probably talk with you about it and get your input. There's also like, you see applications that the city council doesn't see. So if you identify some kind of trend, like, gosh, we keep hearing from developers they can't do this kind of housing because of this reason. Um, you'd talk with us and we might propose something to city council. Hey, I think we'd start seeing more multifamily housing if we stopped requiring a huge open space dedication, for example. So that's where you would participate. Um, we talked about expanding the redo overlay district. This is in downtown housing specifically. Um, and just to mention again, you know, it's because of the existing infrastructure in downtown in large part. There's water and sewer already there, streets already there. And so if we have more units in downtown, it's really great because more people are living there without additional use or addition, without additional expansion of our water and sewer. Um, and that's a short-term project. So most of these are ongoing. This one is short-term. Short-term is meant to be one to five years. So I think we're on track there because we're talking about it and we're thinking about doing it this year. Um, you're here again. Planning commission provide webinars and how-to information packages to educate property owners about developing ADUs and implementing other redo districts or redo prior principles. So um, it doesn't say exactly why you're on here, but please know we're not counting on you to make brochures. But we probably are counting on you to help us come to public outreach sessions and help share information with the community and tell us how we're doing and if we should be doing something different in that regard. Um, here's health and environment. And Jean, I'm not sure if I have the, the goal you were talking about because I tried to just only include the ones with the stars. Um, but this is about development along the river. Um, and we're ensuring that new development preserves its natural character and meets requirements set forth by the Uncompagri River Buffer Overlay Zone and the Uncompagri Riverway Master Plan. So these are um plans already in place. And you are making sure when you review applications that new development is complying with those requirements. And if you think that the requirements are not stringent enough or are too strict, then we talk about it and we might make amendments to those plans. But it's not proposing additional requirements when you make reviews. It's continuing to make sure that development complies with these. And I know, I noted that you're doing this every time there's something in that zone. You're talking about it. Um, this one is interesting. Um, continue to enforce lighting regulations and ordinances for commercial, industrial and residential areas to encourage dark skies where appropriate. Um, sometime if, if you're interested, we could talk about our current dark sky um regulations. They're not as strict as some other communities, but we heard this pop up here and there during the comp plan. And so it's here as an ongoing effort. But I'll tell you right now, obviously we're focusing on other things as the first priorities. Um, continue to encourage water conservation measures through the site development process. Um, you, you may see recommendations to change some requirements where we right now require um a, a set percentage or area, at least in the mobile home parks, to be grass. Probably going to be moving away from that and being more flexible with what you can plant as part of landscaping. And you might hear developers talk about that, too.
So there was a new Colorado statute passed encouraging us to pull out grass and put in other zero scape. There's actually some money behind it. The governor hasn't signed it yet.
Mm hmm.
Is there anything on the back table associated with the city, associated with doing an additional something, something to encourage that sort of change?
We're watching that to see what happens. Um, we also are doing a water study this year to really understand what our water resources are in our municipality um for residential uses primarily. And so I think we're going to see what we learn from that. And it's true that over the next few years especially, um, I think you'll see some shifts from the city standpoint. We're not talking about requiring people to tear out their grass. Please know that's not happening in the back rooms. Um, but we are talking about things like this, like are we open enough to zero scape? Are we requiring people to put in grass where it's really not necessary? Um, did we envision that commercial development used to have a big parking lot and a big grassy area that maybe doesn't make sense anymore? Um, and also at the city, we use some treated city water to irrigate here and there. And we're trying to budget for what it would cost to switch to irrigation water and landscaped areas that could be maintained by that irrigation water instead. So tho- those are some of the things we're talking about.
Can I add? Can you guys hear me okay? That, that topic is coming to the forum. That wa- that not presented by the city and not how it affects city and landscaping, but I think within the next couple of weeks.
It's next week, Wednesday at 8:00 AM.
Will be at, at the forum. So that will be, that will be something you'll want to hear.
You don't want to miss it. It's true. But um going back to the zero scape, on a state level, HOAs are no longer allowed to forbid you to go 100% zero scape. So HOAs in the past have required that you have a certain amount of grass upfront and they're no longer allowed to do that on a state level.
Interesting. Thank you.
Now we're into downtown. We're near, we're rounding the corner. Um, but in downtown, um, you know, you all know, but we're meant to be encouraging and facilitating a vibrant downtown, maximizing opportunities for businesses, improving safety, safety, enhancing our quality of life and maintaining its character and historical viability. And um, Action 1.1 is to consider expanding the B1 Central Business District to include the area west of Townsend Avenue to the Uncompagri River to encourage business and residential development in the downtown area. This is listed as short-term in our comp plan. So it's something that came up as being really important in the comprehensive plan. Um, and we have not talked at the planning commission level or the city council level about expanding this zoning district. And I'll just tell you, I think, you know, Martin and I and Will, we've talked about these things and I think our approach is going to be this unified development code first and then going back in to the zoning regulations. So I wanted to tell you that it's listed as short-term. I think we'll complete that or talk about it within the next five years, but we're not doing it right now. Um, but something that is happening is we're working with CDOT on the West Main Improvement Project. We got a great big grant from CDOT in order to talk about streetscape um on West Main, which is near Storm King Distillery over in that area. And so I think these projects will go hand in hand. Um, but essentially it's starting to think about that part of Main Street as part of our central business district, too. Um, that's the last starred action for planning commission. So these are the things you're really going to be focusing on over, you know, the next five years or so in order to implement the comp plan in case anyone asks you. Do you have any questions about it or thoughts? All right. You? Okay.
Who's going to do all of this? Not, not our stuff. The planning staff's stuff. Because, I mean, I was just like totaling it all up in my mind as I was reading it. And I was envisioning a staff of about 25.
Mm hmm. It's a lot.
Yeah.
Um, for the, we're so lucky to be working with Martin on the land use code update process because he is doing all of that work right now. So we've been able to hire a contractor. And um, that's why I think I keep reiterating this idea of phases because we can't do it all at once. So um, we'd love to, but we are going to do this first part. And then we'll make a plan for the next year and update you on it and, and keep doing that.
I have no doubt you'll be able to do it. I'm just amazed that you will be able to do it.
Well, and honestly, thanks for listening to this presentation because you help hold us accountable, too. Um, and so, you know, we can get really absorbed in development applications and that's your primary focus. Um, but it's just a reminder by talking about it that we all are also working on this other project of the comprehensive plan, too.
Very impressive.
Yeah, thanks for asking. And um, you know, we take volunteers. A couple, couple empty offices.
On that note, have you filled Amy's position?
Um, we have not. We um, we did the round of hiring for a senior planner and we um didn't get any candidates that we thought were a really good fit. And so we changed the position to be a planning manager. And we've been advertising that for about the last three or four weeks and it closes this week on the 12th tomorrow. Um, and so I'm hopeful that we'll get great applicants through that process and hire someone. Um, the truth that I'm learning about planning and building right now, especially in Colorado, is that most planning staffs are understaffed right now. Um, there was an article um in the Denverite and I think on NPR about the city of Denver's planning department. I think they're missing 80 planners, um, is what Scott told me today. Um, their reviews, um, 1% of them are being completed on time right now. So that helps put things in perspective for me, which is, um, we have a rock star here in Will. We're also really lucky to have a consultant and I hope that we fill this position. Um, but I will be honest about times just being really strange right now, too. Um, and so we might need to rely more on consultants. Um, things might just, you know, get reprioritized for a little bit. Um, but I'll keep you up to date on how that process goes. And thank you, Will. Um, we, um, I think and a final offer has been extended to a city attorney. Um, I won't make that announcement publicly, but we'll have a new city attorney joining us in July. Um, and so that's great news. We're, I mean, just as a maybe another example that you might be interested in, um, we also in our planning division for the last year have been trying to hire a plans examiner to help us with that workflow. Um, and we were not successful in recruiting that kind of person either for that position. Um, so we're using a consultant there as well. We're going to start sending some of our building plans out to a consulting company that does that work. They review the building plans and then they send them back to us and then we're able to share them with our customers. Um, so we're hopeful that that'll help fill some gaps as well. So, trying to be creative.
Ian, is this meeting on Zoom? Do we need to have any, uh, see if there's any questions?
This is a, a good time for me to give the update is um, so city council decided to not have their meetings on Zoom anymore and we're going to do the same. So while we have a Zoom box here, it's so that I can present and so that Martin could join if he wanted to. Um, but we're starting as of today, um, putting all of our planning commission meetings online on our website. So the public can still get online and watch. Um, they won't be able to participate in real time like they were able to on Zoom. They'll need to come in person or send us a letter. Um, but it's actually an improvement, I think, because before the pandemic, we didn't have our meetings available online. And people will also be able to re-watch meetings. So if they hear about something exciting that happened at a planning commission meeting, they can get online and watch it again. But thanks for asking.
Thank you.
But we'll still have um applicants and people who are remote able to join by Zoom. Okay. The other update I shared with you was that um you have a new official voting member of the planning commission. So Steve, um, thank you for continuing to serve. And I think it's working well having the alternate position because now we have successfully had two voting planning commissioners who were alternates and were able to see how things go and then join us as planning commissioners. We're recruiting for an alternate. And um, so if you know anyone who's great, tell them to apply.
Oh, I did that at the forum this morning. They had development questions. I was like, you know, if you're worried about the roads and you want to know more. So, yes, shameless plug for the planning commission at the forum this morning.
Excellent. And my final um thing to state, I think, is also a shameless plug, which is we're having a really cool event on Sunday at the amphitheater. It is called the- It is called the Montrose Mudder. And you can still register online or you can register the day of. You get to run through obstacles in the mud or you can come and just watch people finish their 5K through the mud. And then there's a band that starts at 4:00. And I brought some meal tickets for you because you're amazing and you do a lot for us. And if you want to come down and get a meal from a food truck, I think, I'll tell you what time they're starting to serve. But I think they're starting to, the music starts at 4:00 and then the food trucks, I think, start at 2:00. But I'd love to give you a ticket for a free meal from a food truck and come down and check it out and see our new amphitheater in action and listen to some music. So thank you. Yeah, Richard joined us when we had our, that downtown party, our block party. And food trucks and Downtown Colorado Inc. came and we did a tour of San Juan Brews and Chowdun. Thank you. Thank you.
I think that's our last discussion item. So we'll ask for an adjournment. Anybody want to give a motion? There we go.
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor? And we're done.
Thank you, everyone.